Okay, so good evening, everyone. Apologize for the slight delay. Welcome to this evening's Board of Education meeting today, Monday, March 17th, 2025. Please rise and join us in the pledge.
My pledge, Regents, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I'd just like to remind everyone that in case of emergency, there are two exits at the rear of the auditorium. There is an exit at each side of the dais, as well as an exit at the rear of the stage. I'll just quickly introduce the dais. All the way to my left, we have trustee Tasneen Megji, we have trustee Len Hirsch, we have trustee David Keef, we have board vice president Robert Fellerino, I'm board president Mark Hamburg. To my right, we have our superintendent of schools, Dr. Danielle Gately. We have our deputy superintendent of schools, Ms. Diana Kestangway. We have our assistant superintendent of curriculum and personnel, Ms. Ed Chemnitzer. We have our district's council, and then our district clerk. If anyone is here to approach the Board of Education on any topic, there are two open times. The first open time is limited to agenda items only. The second open time at the end of the meeting is open to any topic. There are slips on the top of the piano there. We just ask that you complete them and turn them in to the district clerk. The first open time, excuse me, each open time is limited to three minutes per speaker. So with that, we will get started with our student representative. Do we have our student? Yep, I see. Great.
Hello. My name is Elena, and I'll be the student rep for today because a regular one is out sick. We had a very eventful February, March. On February 27th was Dialogue Night, and it was where students and parents and staff explored ideas related to education, and we had a good turnout because it was worth double showdown points. Then on March 6th was the IFtar Dinner that was hosted by the Muslim Student Association to celebrate the spirit of Ramadan. On March 10th was Wheatley's Got Talent, and TRIAM hosted that, this event, for students to show off their special talents and compete for showdown points again. And then March 10th to the 14th was the big showdown week, that past week, and the seniors did win. Then, in terms of upcoming events, this Thursday, March 20th, is the first No Homework Night. The PTO is sponsoring this event across grades K through 12, so students will have a free night of homework, allowing students to plan an evening with their families. And then if you go to select restaurants, the proceeds from those sales will then go back to this PTO so that they could plan future fun events. And then on Friday, March 21st, is the Career Fair for students in grades 10 through 12, so they'll have the opportunity to attend different presentations with professionals in an array of different fields of study, so you can explore prospective career paths. And then from March 27th to the 29th is the Wheatley Musical. This year, it's Mamma Mia for the Spring. And then finally, on April 4th, third quarter ends, and then we enter the last quarter of the school year. Thank you.
Elena, don't forget to share your notes with me, please. Excellent.
So thank you for that. So we have a lot of great things involving our students tonight, and with that, I will turn it over to our superintendent.
Great, thank you. So we like to feature our students' reports in our monthly newsletter, so I appreciate you sharing those with us. All right, good evening, everybody. I love when it is a athletic awards night because our auditorium is full of students and their families. But before we get to athletic awards, I would like to invite Ms. Pace up in just a moment to share a little bit about a conference, a recent conference that our Wheatley students attended, sponsored by Bosie's. It's the Nassau Bosie Student Leadership Conference, and every year, we send students. And this year, I thought it would be fun to listen to the students and to hear some of the takeaways that they had from that conference. So before we get to that, I would like to just introduce Dr. Larry Leaven, who's the district superintendent for Nassau Bosie's here today. Thank you for all you do for all of our students, and of course, for your help this year in organizing that conference. Along with him is his head of communications, Angela Marshall. Thank you for being here. And I know you'll be just as excited to hear what our students have to say about the conference. So with that, Ms. Pace, if you would come up and introduce the students.
Hi, good evening. I'm Alexis Pace. I'm the interim assistant principal here at Wheatley. So for the past two years, we've had the opportunity to send students to this forum that hosts students from across Long Island. It's an opportunity for students from all over Long Island to get together, they're in mixed groups, to talk about the different issues that are happening in their schools and in their communities. So often, we feel a little bit isolated when we think about the fact that there are districts way out east on Long Island, and even not so way west on Long Island, but knowing what is going on in their schools gives the students a sense of, one, belonging, knowing that they are all experiencing similar things, but then a opportunity to hear from students in other districts where things that happen in their districts and their communities might be unheard of in our own. So without further ado, I want to invite two of our students who attended and represented the Wheatley School. We have Anna Han and Elena Pinto. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Anna Han.
And I'm Elena Pinto.
Okay, so there were four tables with different topics, and it was structured very much like a Dialogue Night, so we each got assigned a different table to start at, and I started at the what and how we learn table. So my main takeaways from this table were separating into the what category was increasing. A lot of schools have increased focus on career readiness through specialized programs, and this includes different classes and real-life classes, such as, I heard like someone has like a barber shop class, or like a fashion design class, or just different classes that if colleges, they're not their next step in life, they have different classes to kind of explore what they would like to continue doing. And another thing was, there are a lot of diverse teaching methods across Long Island, but the main one that kept coming up in conversation was project-based learning throughout all schools, especially in social studies classes and science classes. And then in the how, we talked a lot about, like with the New York State curriculum, if regents are still important and relevant, and a lot of people decided that it was still an important standardized test for everyone to take, just to measure their skills, however annoying they might be. And with a lot of requirements for college prep focus, a lot of colleges require specific credits, and this helps motivate students to do well and prepare themselves for college. And also, throughout all the schools on Long Island, there's a big emphasis on STEM, and a lot of people are taking accelerated classes in math and science, opposed to English and social studies. The next table I went to, oh, this is actually my fourth table, was school environment, and one of the big topics we talked about was support systems in schools. And a lot of students, we discussed the role of guidance counselors and teachers in our lives and how they help us manage stress, because they are the people that we see every day when we come into school. Okay, that was, sorry. And just seeing them every day, face to face, and really engaging with them and conversing with them, and also knowing our workload helps us feel more supported in school. And a lot of things that were suggested, or things that have already been implemented into schools include monthly check-ins for students' well-being. So I heard a lot of guidance counselors, they'll have a day or a period in the school, like once a month, where guidance counselors will go into classrooms, or they'll be set up in the cafeteria, and then students can just go up and like talk to them for a few minutes, and this helps let students be acquainted with their guidance counselors if they don't want to reach out because they're too scared, or they're not familiar with who's in the guidance office. And then also, we talked about fostering spirit and positivity in their schools. A lot of schools started doing weekend club opportunities for social connection, including they would have like walk-a-thons, or like, I know some clubs went hiking, or other things on the weekends outside of a busy school week, something to look forward to at the end of the week, kind of like showdown, where we had a big event Friday night to all want, and everyone was there. And then also, a lot of schools are encouraging teachers to be more considerate and prepared for helping students with struggles, just maybe saying, "Oh, how are you guys doing today?", and kind of like not piling up the homework when they know it's going to be a busy week with something else. And yeah.
So then we focused on academic pressure was another table. So in terms of academic stress and mental health, three big things that we focused on were higher-level classes. Obviously, that comes with high stakes, large exams that kind of culminate the whole course load, and procrastination is something that a lot of students face as well within these higher-level courses, and trying to balance that is something that's really important. Another thing was online grade books. I know we implemented that this year, that you can just go in and check on Infinite Campus your current grade status, but sometimes that might lead to more concern because you're just looking at your grades and worrying about that rather than really overarching like the material and delving into that more so, so we kind of weighed the pros and cons of that in particular. And then college admissions, the thing that looms over all students throughout high school, especially here, grades 8 through 12, and so kind of like focusing on college admissions but also embracing your high school experience is something that we felt would quell the academic pressure a little bit more, and then just seize the opportunities in high school that will then eventually lead to great college decisions, but rather doing things out of joy and curiosity first, would kind of alleviate some of that pressure. Additionally, emphasis on individualized path was really important because we talked about how like, there's not one mold or one student, rather like breaking that mold and having guidance counselors and teachers open different opportunities. So maybe for some traditional like four-year undergrad school, it's not for them, trade schools and other options, so really making all options known to students will make them feel less alone and be able to pursue different pathways, and also finding this balance between electives and those higher-level courses that we talked about with like the AP, IB, and stuff like that, because we want students to really look at particular things that they're interested in, that they might want to minor in, or pursue a further career path in, while also getting those more rigorous classes. So finding that balance is really important, further emphasis on that. And the final one is mental health, which kind of was touched upon on all the tables, but some major points was the influence of social media on mental health. Obviously, in this day and age, social media plays an even larger role continuously, and so when you look online and there's comparisons, whether academically, socially, and then you come to the school environment with the peers that you're really interacting with online, it's important that you create the space, the safe space, both in cyberspace and then also in our school, and finding that continuity is really important to alleviate that pressure that we talked about, and then also support mental health. Additionally, creating a supportive school environment, something that we said here was that students should really spearhead these things because promoting mindfulness, breakout rooms for relaxation, like Anna mentioned, taking a day or a period to help students and collaborate, when students are spearheading those, leading the clubs, like here we have like that Mental Health Wellness Club, I believe, and then like maybe in yoga, taking some time, then other students are more likely to join in and then really further like contribute to this feeling of mindfulness, meditation, and be equipped with those strategies so then when beyond high school into college, they can continue those. And then finally, the role of guidance counselors, something interesting that some students mentioned was maybe having different, like differentiating different guidance counselors, some that are focused on mental health and social situations and problems, and then other ones focused on coursework and navigating the college admissions process, maybe finding those more specialized guidance counselors would help students feel more prepared and comfortable with going to the particular guidance counselor of the realm that they're dealing with, and then go to a different one for a different issue. So then we just create this more collaborative and then personal connection guidance counselor experience. So that was all you learned. Thank you so much for listening to this ramble.
Every time we give the students an opportunity to share with us, I think we all walk away better for it. So thank you for your presentation and for sharing some of your takeaways. You know, as educators, we have the opportunity on a regular basis to collaborate and work with professionals from across Long Island and the state, and certainly the country. So I love this opportunity, Dr. Leaven, that gives children the opportunity to talk to each other and collaborate with their peers across district lines. It certainly helps us to realize that we are not living in a siloed world here at Wheatley, and other high school students are having the same discussions. So thank you for that, and thank you, ladies, for your wonderful presentation. Okay, without any further ado, I would like to invite Mr. Scotorro up to celebrate our winter athletes.
Okay, thank you to the Board of Education for giving me the opportunity to present our winter team and individual performances from this past winter season, as we start spring today, ironically. I'd like to call up the members of the varsity boys indoor track team. Please come up when I call your name. Matthew Flackner, Josh Korlowski, Maureen McHale, Aaron Shin, William Wei, Nicholas Yang, Alexander Yee Chan, Nathaniel Zachariah, Ali Ahmad, Assad Islam, Thaddeus Begon, Matthew Caputo, Stephen Barrera, Liam Connell, Karen Gabor, Michael Gabenabitsi, Asher Hirsch, Ishan Kapoor, Havish Kumar, Felix Lin, Noor Mayer, Christian Morales, Cristiano Tortorello, Brandon Yee Chan, Anthony Baldassano, Robert Strong, and Erica Wu. So this winter, the boys indoor track and field team is being recognized for their conference six championship season this past winter, with an impressive showing on championship night. The team finished first place with a score of 136 points, with a score differential of 35 points ahead of second-place Oyster Bay. The boys also then finished in fourth place in Nassau County Class C Championships. Congratulations, boys. Could have a seat.
Good job, boys.
Our next team is the girls gymnastics team. With Katie Mushiev, Abigail Toller, and Samantha Jackness come up. Let's find your certificates. Okay, this winter, the varsity girls gymnastics team won their conference championship with a record of eight and one. This was conference two. During the season, the team finished first place at the Cartwheel for Cure meet for conference two, and you'll hear more about the accomplishments coming up shortly for some of our individual girls. These girls are to be credited also for going to car plates and competing in our combination of teams, so every day, they do not compete here, they practice and play at car plates. So congratulations, girls. Nice job. Our individual accomplishments, we have a bunch. Come on up. Samantha Jackness, Abigail Toller, sorry, made you walk back and forth. Sorry. Daniel Haroun, Pravithra Eswar, Anthony Sparasia, DJ Paulson, Tim Schwam, Kevin Murphy, Adam Plana, Eric Wu, Matty George, Brandon Yee Chan, Samantha Pranito, and Karen Gabor. Okay, so individually, we had another great winter season. Samantha Jackness was recognized as Newsday Top 10 Gymnast, was also named All-State. She placed third in the All-Around at State Qualifier and placed 15th out of 99 gymnasts at the New York State Gymnastics Championship in Clarence, New York. She was also most recently awarded the John Curtis Award for the highest average all-around score in the all-around event this season with a 36.48 average for all of Nassau County. Congratulations, Samantha. Abigail Toller finished third place in the bars event at the state qualifier and participated in the New York State Gymnastics Championships in Clarence, New York, and was also named to the All-State team. Congratulations, Abby. Daniel Haroun won the Nassau County Championship in Boys Wrestling at 285-pound weight class and participated in the state championships in Albany, New York. Congratulations, Dan. Pravithra Eswar finished second place in the first-ever Girls Wrestling Nassau County Championships at 126-pound weight class and participated in the first-ever New York State Girls Wrestling Championships in Albany. Congratulations to Pravithra. Anthony Sparasia won his 300th career varsity girls basketball game with a 45-34 win over Great Neck South on February 8th, 2025. Congratulations, Anthony. Varsity indoor track and field coaching staff was named Conference Six Coaching Staff of the Year as a result of their excellent work throughout the winter season and their conference six championship on the boys' side and a very good showing on the girls' side. Congratulations, coaches. And our track and field conference champions, we had Eric Wu in the weight throw and shot put, we had Matty George in the long jump and triple jump, we had Brandon Yee Chan in the long jump and triple jump, we had Samantha Pranito in the pole vault, and Karen Gabor in the 55-meter hurdles, and Karen was also, also won the 55-meter hurdles county champion, so congratulations to everybody. That concludes the winter sports awards. Congratulations.
I know that they want each of you to go outside to take a picture in front of the step and repeat, but certainly this is one of the things, one of the opportunities the board gets to say, "Thank you. You really bring us great joy, and it's really a pleasure to celebrate together with all of you." We recognize that the students are just a part of it, it's obviously the parents as well, and of course, their coaches, so we congratulate all of you and thank you for coming down tonight.
Congratulations, student athletes. All right, so you may have heard that last week at Wheatley was showdown. I would like to share a little bit of the details, or a few of the details. Certainly, the week was packed with activities and challenges and Legos and lots of fun, certainly, but I think the most important part about showdown is the fundraising and the philanthropic work that our students do. So just to share some of those details, we collected 2,972 books for book fairies, 6,656 food items for the inn, 336 hygiene bags were created for the sharing shelf, 282 bags of clothing were donated, and $2,117.72 was collected for the Dr. Farhan Rahim Foundation. So congratulations to the building team, to our students for all of their hard work, and of course, to the seniors on their big win. Okay, tonight, Erica Messier, who has been serving as our interim director of social studies and real-world learning, is on the agenda with an anticipated appointment to the probationary position. We look forward to continuing our work together. Congratulations, almost. Just a few upcoming events. As you heard from Elena, Thursday, March 20th, is our very first No Homework Night across the district, and there are PTO-sponsored facilities and restaurants in the neighborhood that you can visit. Some of that money will be donated back to the PTO, and of course, we love the idea of families getting to spend some no homework time together. Our annual college fair this year is being held at Roslin. Remember, every year, we flip-flop, so we hosted last year, this year, Roslin is hosting it, April 2nd, at the high school, from 6:00 to 8:00. Our SEPC, Special Education Parent Council Meeting, is March 24th at 7:00 PM here in room 450, focused on transitions, K through 12 and beyond. And of course, our parent university is April 9th, starting at 7:00 PM. More details to follow, but we look forward to hosting a panel of experts to talk about social media and cellphone use, obviously with the governor's impending shift and looking forward down the line. We've had a lot of conversations with adults, and we would like to hear from some of the experts as to the dangers of social media and cellphone use, and how we can help to moderate that with our children. So we look forward to seeing you there. Please come and bring a friend. It should be a great night. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, superintendent. With that, it brings us to board report, and we have our regular board committee updates. We have our CFAC. Mr. Fellerino?
We held the CFAC meeting last week, and there's a lot of items on the agenda, I won't go through all of them, but there was an update on the projects that were in progress, including the Wheatley Gym HVAC, and some issues concerning the north-side fencing issues, and some of the future projects were discussed, including the transfer of capitals as part of the budget, and what, all the recommendations that the administration's putting forth with regard to that, and got the input from the CFAC. Then we discussed, again, the reserve, the ending of the most recent reserve, and putting that money into next year's capital reserve project, and that'll be on the election, on the ballot this year as a proposition. And then there was a whole slew of items that was a long-ranging discussion concerning whether they should be part of the bond projects, because the bonds are coming off, and the last one will be coming off, I believe, in 2030, and whether that should be funded through bonds, and discussions with regard to the debt service and the 2% cap, and issues involved in that, and the list of items that needed to be upgraded over the next three to five years. And so the CFAC actually threw it back to administration, Mr. McGallister and Mr. Kestangway, to come up with a list of items that were the priorities, and then to have a joint meeting between the CFAC and the Financial Advisory Committee and come up with a game plan as to how to fund those projects and what would be the best way to go about it. So I believe that was the end of the meeting, and then a discussion about having that joint meeting.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Fellerino. That was it on the committee updates. Was there any members of the board that want to add anything else to the board report? Nope? Okay, thank you. So that brings us to the first open time. We have, this first open time is limited to 15 minutes, three minutes per speaker. We have one slip. So Elena, as you approached the microphone, the board has asked me to share with the public this evening during both open times that the board started practicing the three-minute rule back again, per our policy, at the start of this school year, not to necessarily limit anybody's voice, but to try to maintain decorum and respect of everybody's time so that the message could be delivered within that three-minute period. We certainly also want to remind the public that there are other channels to certainly share, anything that you do wish to share with the Board of Education and/or administration, which of course is through the email chain and/or phone calls directly to our administrators. So we just ask that everyone be mindful of the three-minute rule.
Before you start timing me, are you aware that the current board meeting is not streaming live, the audio?
I would not be aware of that, no. We'll certainly ask our tech-
A few people are trying to access, it's nowhere to be found on YouTube.
Okay, we'll certainly ask our tech people to check that, and as long as it's being recorded, it will be posted as it normally is following the meeting.
Okay. Now you can start timing. I have a question about the agenda item that involves the new student clubs, the Jewish Club and the Muslim Association, and just wondering how come the other religions are not included, since we're trying to be so inclusive? Christian Club, Hindu Club?
Superintendent?
Sure. So we have a process-
When you answer, does my time still-
Student Club.
Okay.
Good. We have a process for student clubs annually. They are requested by students, and then the building administration reviews those requests, has conversations with the students, and as of last year, these were the only two religious clubs that were requested.
Now, if let's say five, six, 10 more religious clubs are requested, do we have the resources to have the advisors, financial resources, and classroom resources, space resources?
Sure.
So every year, we have a plethora of clubs that might be requested, and the building administration works with students to try to get as many of those clubs included as they can, and the process would be the same.
Okay, and would it be more inclusive to establish a general, maybe, interface club or a cultural appreciation, something like that, rather than being discriminating towards other religions at the moment?
If I may, I just want to be clear that there's no discrimination happening, and I also want to say we do have clubs like that. We have the Inter-Cultural Unity Club, which is longstanding here at Wheatley. We have the Equity Club, also longstanding here at Wheatley. So there are a variety of clubs that kind of fit that description.
Okay. I know you said there's no discrimination happening, but there are people that feel they are being discriminated.
I'm open to have those conversations. Please let them know they should contact me.
Okay. And where do we draw the line on what qualifies as a recognized religious group within the school setting?
I don't know what that question means. I'm sorry.
You know, where do we draw the line? I know that religion is supposed to be kept outside of school, right? There's no religion in a public school. So just wondering, where do we draw the line as to what's going to be happening in these clubs?
So I think there's a difference here between extracurricular student-led clubs and curriculum and what is taught. So certainly, we teach about religions. We don't teach or proselytize religion as part of our curriculum. Those are part of the social studies standards, and through history, we have to teach about different religions, but what we're talking about here tonight are student-led extracurricular clubs, which are essentially open to any topic along, as long as they fit within the guidelines of the board policy.
Lastly, let's say, I mean, I noticed that the same advisors are going to be advising the both clubs, both the Jewish and the Muslim Club. I did not notice these advisors present at the last few meetings. Are they not present during the religious club in session?
So advisors for every club are opened up to all employees. All teachers have the right to apply for advisorships. So for these-
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
All teachers have the right to apply to be an advisor for clubs that are posted annually. These are annual postings.
No, that's not my question. My question is, I saw photos of the club in session, and I didn't see the advisors that are listed in the agenda right now present during those clubs. So the advisors are not going to be there when the club is in session?
So I can't speak to the photographs that you're referencing, but I can say that our advisors are part of the clubs. I can't speak in any other detail to anything else that you're referencing. I haven't seen those photos. Just because the teachers aren't in the photos doesn't mean that they weren't present at the meetings.
Okay, and the second question I have is about the other agenda item, the event or a speaker that's being invited. Sarah, I'm not sure how to pronounce her last name.
316.
Sarah Gronnigstada. I'm not sure how to say her name.
Go ahead.
I'll ask Mr. Kamnitzer to talk about that.
Sure. So our associate teachers saw Ms. Gronnigstada at a New York Historical Society event, and they felt as if her talk was relevant to their 11th grade curriculum. So she's coming to speak to our students in 11th grade.
I'm sorry, about what?
She's coming to speak to our students in 11th grade.
About what?
So her book, Rising Generation, is about slavery and the transition, the legal transition from slavery to freedom, and her work is perfect and appropriate for the curriculum 11th grade students take. So that's why she's coming.
What curriculum?
The 11th grade social studies.
Okay, so when you say slavery, is it just black slavery, or is it all slavery, like, let's say Jews coming out of Egypt slavery?
So her work looks at how New York played a major role in abolishing slavery in the United States of America.
Okay, thank you. Oh, one last thing. How much are we spending on the speaker? Dollar or not?
$800.
Thank you.
Seeing no more slips for the first open time. I'll move into the action items. Going to group action items 3.1 and 3.2 together. May I have a second? Mr. Fallarino, discussion. Seeing and hearing no discussion, I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor? Item's passed 5-0. Thank you. Going to take item 3.3 by itself. May I have a second? Ms. Maggi, discussion. Seeing and hearing no discussion, I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor? Item passes 5-0. Thank you. Going to take 3.4 by itself. May I have a second? Mr. Hirsch, discussion. Seeing and hearing no discussion, I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor? Item passes 5-0. Going to take item number 3.5 by itself. I'm going to make, take the second as it's written, and then I'm going to bring up discussion. So may I have a second? Ms. Maggi, discussion. The board had received a few petitions from candidates that were running for BOCs. After review of the petitions, I'd like to recommend that we add Michael Jamie to our list of nominations with the resolution now reads three. Fran Langsor, Robert B. A. Schoen, I'd like to add Michael Jamie. Mr. Keefe, as our BOC's liaison, I don't know if you want to add any comments to this item this evening?
Only to say that I know the two folks very well that are on, that are on the docket, and they're excellent. They really do look out for the contiguous districts in Nassau BOCs, and the gentleman whose name you just added, I do not know him as a BOC's person because he's not, but I know him quite well through the statewide New York State School Board Association. He's been involved in that for several years. He's heavily involved in Nassau County educational circles, and I recommend all three of them for tonight.
Thank you. Any other discussion from the board? Okay, so just point of order, Mr. Sheehan, so there was a second, so just correct me or correct me on what I need to do now in order to amend. I want to make a new motion to amend?
Yes, you have to move to amend now.
Okay, so I'm going to move to amend item number 3.5, adding Michael Jamie. May I have a second? Mr. Keefe? Any other discussion? Seeing and hearing no further discussion, I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor? Item passes 5-0. Thank you. I'm going to group items 3.6. Oh, that was just for the amend. Now, no, I'm sorry. Then I need to, okay, right. I made a move to amend the resolution. Now we have to move on the item itself. Thank you. Thank you for that clarification. So I'm going to ask for a second on the item itself. Ms. Maggi, discussion. Seeing and hearing no discussion, call for the vote? All in favor? It shows 5-0. Thank you very much. I'm grouping items 3.6 to 3.8 together. May I have a second? Ms. Maggi, discussion. Seeing and hearing no discussion, I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor? Items pass 5-0. Thank you. Going to take 3.9 by itself. May I have a second? Mr. Keefe, discussion. Seeing and hearing no discussion, I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor? Item passes 5-0. Thank you. Grouping items 3.10 and 3.11 together. May I have a second? Mr. Hirsch, discussion. Seeing and hearing no discussion, I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor? Items pass 5-0. Thank you. I'm grouping items 3.12 to 3.16 together. May I have a second? Mr. Fallarino, discussion. Seeing and hearing no discussion, I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor? Items pass 5-0. Thank you. I'm going to group items 3.17 to 3.25 together. Excuse me. No, no, 3.21. 3, 3.17 to 3.21 together. May I have a second? Mr. Keefe, discussion. Seeing and hearing no discussion, I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor? Items pass 5-0. Thank you. Group items 4.1 to 4.6 together. May I have a second? Mr. Fallarino, discussion. Seeing and hearing no discussion, I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor? Items pass 5-0. Thank you. 5.1 and 5.2 together. May I have a second? Mr. Keefe, discussion. Seeing and hearing no discussion, I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor? Items pass 5-0. Thank you. I'm going to group items 6.1 to 6.6 together. May I have a second? Ms. Maggi, discussion. Seeing and hearing no discussion, I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor? Items pass 5-0. Thank you. I'm going to group items 7.1 to 7.2 together. May I have a second? Mr. Fallarino, discussion. Seeing and hearing no discussion, I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor? Items pass 5-0. Thank you. I'm going to group items 8.1 to 8.4 together. May I have a second? Mr. Fallarino, discussion. Seeing and hearing no discussion, I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor? Items pass 5-0. Thank you. I am going to group items 9.1 and 9, to 9.10 together. 9.1 to 9.10. May I have a second? Mr. Fallarino, discussion. I'm just going to reiterate what the superintendent said in her earlier report in regards to Ms. Mizer.
Messier.
Messier, I can never say it right, sorry. The board did have a chance to meet with her again, now midway or a little bit more than midway through a probationary period, with the opportunity to take the position permanently, and we enjoyed that conversation, appreciate all the candor that you shared with us, and we look forward to what I believe will be a positive vote this evening. Is there any more discussion on 9.1 to 9.10? Seeing and hearing no further discussion, I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor? Items pass 5-0, and congratulations.
Mr. Kamberg, Mr. Wu is also here tonight. He's being appointed as a substitute.
Oh, Mr. Wu, I'm so sorry that I didn't know that.
And he just finished his student teaching with us, so we're so happy to have him. Thank you.
Thank you for coming down tonight. Thank you for that. All right, brings us to the second open time. So I do have a slip. Elena? Elena, I would give you more time, but I don't have any more slips after you.
I'm collecting my thoughts. So this is a question for the attorney. Last time I raised the question regarding the legality of poll watchers to be present during the counting process, and you told me to do my own research because school board elections do not abide by the state or county or town regulations. And I looked at the guidelines, the yellow piece of paper that poll watchers get and the candidate gets, and it says on the very top, poll watchers can be present in the poll room. So my question is, did you figure out why the poll watchers were kicked out? Because your own guidelines say that they can stay in the poll room, and number two, during the, this year's election, will the poll watchers be kicked out of the poll room again?
So attorneys don't typically get addressed at Board of Education meetings. The questions go to the Board of Education, and the board can certainly turn to the attorney and see if he's willing to answer. I would only ask that you answer if you're prepared to answer, Mr. Sheehan. If not, you can certainly get back to the question at a later time.
I'm prepared. Thank you. So the Commissioner of Education has held that there is no provision under the education law entitling candidates to have poll watchers at a polling place. That appeal of Golden, decision 14573, 2001. Moreover, the Commissioner of Education has previously held that there's no requirement that absentee ballots be open in the presence of a candidate or their representatives. That's appeal of German, decision 17108. That's a 2017 decision. So there is no legal requirement for there be poll watchers present in the polling place. The, I believe, you are misinterpreting the procedures and, that were posted previously by the district clerk. Those procedures were implemented by the district clerk as they, as they have been, and there was no requirement that there be polling, polling, poll watchers in the polling place at that time.
In the last question, I mean, the last meeting a couple of months ago when I asked you this, you told me to go and look at the school's guidelines, and I did, and it says in the guideline, I know you're saying that there's no requirement by the state and you don't have to do it, but your own guidelines say that the poll watchers can be present in the room. So are you now saying that the guidelines are wrong, or that you're not going to abide by your own guidelines?
I'm saying that you're misinterpreting the guidelines.
Can you read the first bullet point of the guideline?
I do not have the guidelines in front of me, but I have reviewed this previously.
Okay.
I reviewed this previously in the last election.
And so can you explain how I'm misinterpreting?
There's an appeal went to the Commissioner of Education and was dismissed. So our guidelines are clear. The district clerk, the district clerk implemented the guidelines as they were stated. That issue has previously been reviewed and decided by the commissioner.
I just don't understand. The very first bullet point states poll watchers can be present in the room.
I'm sorry, I'm not going to go back and forth.
You're not explaining it, though.
I, I understand that.
He explained that it's an interpretation.
I believe I'm not explaining it, but that's-
I'm sorry, what?
He explained that it's an interpretation, and he feels you're interpreting it wrong as already defined, as already defined by the Commissioner of Education based on the appeal that was placed.
What appeal?
Look it up.
Okay. So are you going to change your guideline, or are you going to keep the guideline as is? The current poll watchers' guidelines. Are you going to change them now?
We're not changing anything unless counsel advises as such.
But you're not explaining how the, the guidelines are being misinterpreted. You're just not. Yeah, you're laughing, but a lot of people in our town and in our village are wondering. It's funny to you, but it's not funny to many people.
Is there another question, Elena?
No, because you're not explaining how you're missing, how we are misinterpreting the guideline. It's very, the language is very clear. Poll watchers can be present in the room.
And as shared, the commissioner didn't agree with your interpretation. Your interpretation is incorrect. Are there any other questions?
Okay. Can you read me again the case that you're talking about, the commissioner's case?
Sure. The appeal of Golden is the case. And there is citation is decision number 14573. That's a 2001 decision.
Okay, and how do we know that this appeal in that case that you're talking about had that school district had the same guidelines as ours? Every school district has their own guidelines, right, when it comes to school elections?
This is the general proposition by the Commissioner of Education that there's no legal requirement that poll watchers be present at the polling place.
Oh, I got that point, but your own guidelines did state that they can be present. Thank you. That's what I mean. I'm glad we have this on record. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else that wants to approach during open time this evening? Seeing no one else, I'm going to make a motion to adjourn. May I have a second? Ms. Maggi, discussion. Seeing and hearing no discussion. All in favor? 5-0. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.